Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of May 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Town Hall. The first agenda item on the warrant, I'm sorry, the first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. The next item on the, under Agenda A is approval of regular session minutes from April 22, 2024.
Motion to approve regular session minutes, April 22, 2024.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. And the next is the approval of the executive session minutes from April 22, 2024.
Yep. You know, so make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes of April 22, 2024.
And I would second that and make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is public hearings. We do have quite a list of public hearings this evening, so please be patient with us. The first public hearing we have this evening is Guido &amp; Son LLC seeks to transfer its retail package store wine and malt beverage license to MPG Corporation doing business as Garrett's Family Market. This is a change of location. The new business location is 111 Cedar Street in Milford, Massachusetts. All the paperwork is in order, and I believe that, is Ray Bradford here this evening? Okay, thank you very much. And Attorney Louis Cassis? Okay, if you gentlemen want to come up, come forward, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Proud of my raspy voice, it's over the floor. I'm with me is Peter Garrett to my right, Ray Bradford. Pete's the majority owner of MPG Corporation. Raymond will be the manager of the new, of the new location. He's to transfer the wine and malt package store license from 194 West Street to 111 Cedar Street. If you, you might know, MPG owns several other gas stations around, convenience store gas stations I place. In fact, on my application, I listed five and there really is seven. I'll amend that tomorrow and send it up. There's another one in Danville, there's another one in, in Barnstable, and I'll fix that on the application, on the attached sheet. All of, all of our employees are tips trained, they have a zero tolerance policy, they've had amazing success through all the locations, very, very few violations. We had one a couple of years ago in Westwood, where a kid showed an ID and the board thought it wasn't good enough. It's on appeal, it's on appeal now. It's the only, the only blemish on their record for the last 20 odd years.
Okay. And the current license is coming out of 194 Main?
I think it's, I thought it was West, for some reason.
Oh, West Street, okay, okay.
Yeah, it would be West Street, Michael.
Okay, West Street, okay, okay. All right, well, the first we have is Department Head Review Form, and the Building Commissioner, the IBZonal Albo Use Group M use in occupancy, building and restrooms are accessible. Town Planner, no change of actual use, tax collector, no outstanding taxes, Town Treasurer, no outstanding liens, Fire Chief has no objections, Police Chief approves, and the Board of Health has no issues. With that, I'll turn it over to a member, Mr. Mazakelli, any questions?
Yes, Michael, like I said, I've been through this application and everything seemed to be well, well in order. And like the attorney said, he mentioned five, but there's really seven, it's even better. If it was less, it'd be a different, but this, this is much, much better too, thank you for that. So if there's no other further questions or concerns, I would make a motion that we accept the transfer of the retail package store from Guido &amp; Sons LLC, of his package store wine and malt beverage license to MPG Corporation doing business as Garrett's Family Market, and for this change of lo, of location, for this new business as well.
Okay, before I second that, this is a public hearing, is anybody here in the audience for the public hearing or online?
Not for online.
Nothing online, anybody in the general audience? Okay, not seeing anyone, I would gladly second that motion and make it unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
You too. Wish you the best.
Good luck to you.
Beautiful location.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, the next public hearing is the first of a few from National Grid. This is a petition from Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon New England Incorporated to install one JO pole on North Bow Street at approximately 160 feet north of the center line of the intersection of South Main Street and Grove Street. They also seek permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires. Michael Parent representing National Grid, you are Mr. Parent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. We'll be attending the hearing. And with that, sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so, North Bow Street, this is a, a pole that's necessary, they're reconducting out of the substation, and coming, coming in a different direction, and they put up a larger wire size. This particular pole, where it meets the three-phase primary on the other part of Bow Street, is a different sized wire, so they need a pole to have what they call a dead-end anchor. The anchor pulls back the tension. So in this case, it's a larger sized wire that's connected to a smaller size, so they need to have this pole in place to have the anchor which will go parallel to the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, I can't use the first pole, which I think is pole 12, so that's why I have to sort of see, to connect the intermediary to do what they're going to do there.
Yeah, no, like I said, Mr. Parent gave a good description of why, you know, and like I said, it's something that's a necessity, I would, I would think. So I do, if there's no other further questions from any of the audience, both in person or online, or this is a public hearing, I make a motion.
Anybody online, Chris?
Not for this public hearing.
And anybody in the audience for any of the?
Telephone poles.
Telephone pole?
I thought we were talking about that at 6:30. It's not early?
Number of different ones, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
Okay, all righty.
Yes, so again.
Not seeing anybody, I would sec, you made the motion?
I make a motion to accept what Mr. Parent just described, to upgrade this pole on North Bow Street.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. Okay, sir, the next one you have is?
South Main.
To install one JO pole on South Main Street at approximately 60 feet north of the center line of the intersection of South Main Street and Grove Street. They also seek permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Go ahead, Mr. Parent.
So this is a similar situation with tension and guying. Situation here is where the pole transitions at pole 14 to Grove Street. Normally, we would have an anchor pulling it back, either what they call bisecting, one anchor holding it all completely back. In this case, we really can't do that easily. They're, they're going to use a pole across the street in, in one direction, pretty much following the path of Grove Street to be that tension holder, but in order to prevent that wire from pulling back towards South Main Street, they need one in the opposite direction, so there's no way to easily do that from pole 14, so they need to go across that intersection and, and hold the tension back that way in that, in the northern direction of South Main Street.
So you're going to install a, another pole for that?
Yeah, to this fourth pole with a one guy on.
Right, yeah, okay, okay.
It's a part of the same project.
Okay, Chris, anybody online?
Not for this hearing.
Anybody in the audience for this public hearing? Not seeing anybody, I'll take a motion on the pole on South Main Street and Grove Streets?
Right, yes, a motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the alterations and corrections that Mr. Parent just described to us on that pole.
And I would second that and make that unanimous as well. Okay, the next pole relocation is install one JO pole on South, I'm sorry, one JO pole on Carver Road at a point approximately 10 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Vine Street and continuing approximately 120 feet in a north direction. They also, they being National Grid, also seek permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Mr. Parent, please.
So, this is a separate project. There's a couple of things going on here. This, this pole 10, I believe, has a tree guy across the street, and they're looking to alleviate that. This intermediary pole on Carver Road would be to pick up the, the wires on the, on the road, because I guess they're sagging over there, so to kind of give them back to a normal height or above normal height for us. And there's some other pole replacements going on, I guess the wires over there are a bit, a little bit low, and that's what they're looking to do here.
Okay, any questions?
No, no, I don't, Michael, thanks.
Chris, anybody online for public hearing on?
Not for this.
Anybody in the general audience for the pole relocation, public hearing on Carver Road? Not seeing anybody, I'll take a motion, please?
Motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the description that Mr. Parent gave in regards to make the JO pole on Carver Road, and any, to any improvements that he suggested that is made there, I make a motion that we approve that.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. Okay, under public hearings, our next pole relocation is Verizon, National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated install one JO pole on One Industrial Road beginning at a point approximately 96 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Bird Street. They also seek permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Mr. Parent?
So this is actually a, a new pole install, sort of intermediary between pole one on Industrial Road and pole 17 on Bird Street. It's far up a piece of equipment, with some of these other petitions I hear for, it's a, called a capacitor bank. It, it helps regulate the flow of electricity to the system, especially in areas that have like long stretches of, of wire, or lots of commercial stuff, so that it maintains the same sort of voltage going through, it doesn't dip below our norm, so. And it also helps us regulate and maintain the system, see if there's anything out of the ordinary going on there.
Now, is that, if you don't mind me asking, a result of the new apartment complex?
Um, I'm, I'm not 100% sure. We have a few in the area, so I think they're trying to regulate things throughout the area, and they might have had some issues or potential issues out there.
Okay, thank you. Paul, any questions?
No, just as you described it here, which is also in the description of this notice of the public hearing, if there's no one in the audience that are in person or online, then, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to accept the JO pole on One Industrial Road as described by Mr. Parent.
Okay, Chris, nobody online for public hearing, is anybody in the audience for a public hearing on the tel, new pole installation on Industrial Road? Not seeing anybody, I would second that motion and make it unanimous. Okay, our next pole relocation, our next new pole is to install one JO pole on Cedar Street beginning at approximately 760 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Old Cedar Street. They also seek permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Mr. Parent?
Is this for pole 75-50? The work, the question number?
Yes.
So that was there on Cedar Street, 85. Again, intermediary pole, same sort of piece of equipment, regulate voltage, I think it's right near, somewhere near where Lowe's in the, in the house is there, 85.
Okay. Chris, Matt, any questions?
No.
Chris, anybody online for the public hearing, anybody in the general audience for the pole on Old Cedar Street? Not seeing anybody, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chair, to install one JO pole on Cedar Street, beginning at a point approximately 760 feet north of the center line of intersection of Old Cedar Street, and as what Mr. Parent described just now.
And I would gladly second that and make that unanimous. Okay, our next pole relocation is Bird Street.
Medway Road, right?
Medway Road?
Yeah.
Uh, I got it.
Number seven?
Yeah, number, number seven.
Install one JO pole on Beaver Street beginning at approximately 450 feet southwest of the center line of the interse-
This is Medway Road, Mike.
Yeah, Medway Road, yeah. Install a new 45-foot midspan between poles two and three. Mr. Parent?
That is not on Medway, that is on Beaver's.
That would be Beaver, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said there.
That's the way it came over to us, so.
Oh, really? I'm sorry, I, I didn't send that stuff over.
Yeah.
So it seems to be a little mix-up there. So there's, there's a pole on Beaver Street, and there's a pole on Medway Road.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so, the one we're going to address now is Medway?
Yes.
Okay. So Medway is pole, pole 19, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so they're looking to do the same thing there, install an intermediary pole for a voltage regulating device on that main road.
So this is the pole on, on Medway Road, 187 feet east of the center line of intersections of Bird Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. All right, any questions, Paul?
No.
Sir, is there a here on this one?
Yeah.
Would you like to?
Yeah, I'll have a couple of questions on this one.
Come on right up.
All right.
Come on right up and identify.
Give your name and address, please.
Donald Larson, 16 Medway Road. Thank you, thank you. My concern is, on that one, is that I still have septic, and I've been planning on trying to tie into the sewer, and of course, you guys, it's like a seven-year wait before you can cut into Medway Road, so I've been like waiting, and then when I saw this, I was wondering about the underground lines that are going to be running across, would that be causing an issue? Because I'm pulling sewer right from my house right out to 109. That was my concern, if it's, you know, going to be like, because it says you're running underground cable?
No, underground cable.
You sure? That's what it says.
I think the, I think the wording in the town's documentation tries to encompass everything, like, you know, if we apply for it, I think they put in-
It's there anyway.
Underground or whatever, but in this particular case, there's no underground. The only thing we've installed is a pole which will go about six, seven feet in the ground.
Oh, okay, I was just concerned about figuring, you know, cables going down then running parallel across, and would that cause a problem when it comes time to tie in the sewer? I didn't know, because I think I'm the last house on, on Medway Road that still has septic.
What number Medway Road?
16. 16, old Peshaw, house, and-
16 or 17?
60.
60, I see.
60, so you're right there.
The pole's going to go right, right in front.
Yeah, well, see, that, my house is right, that's where my-
The driveway is.
Tie in the driveway, the house is right here, so I'd be pulling my head. I was thinking you were going to be running cable across to this one and-
No, it's over here.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, well, that, that's, that's fine.
I would also, you know, they're going to stake these at some point whenever they, whenever they go to do it. I would just, if you have a plan or if you're looking to make a plan, just make sure, you know, that far enough over.
I mean, if you, it'd be-
If you could, you could go closer to my, you know, line here between 50, but see, you want something that's definitely right in the middle between the both of those.
Well, we can, we can skew it a little, I think there's, there's some trees there.
Yeah, there's a tree, because when they widened the road back in the early 80s, they took some of the land and, yeah, they put a tree there.
I'll put a note in to say, hey, let's see, if we can move it west a little bit, as far as possible-
Yeah.
Towards that tree, because of the potential for you to tie in.
Yeah, that, that's my only concern, I didn't know if you were running a cable underneath, and I was like, oh, this is going to be, could be a problem. That's it.
Okay. You satisfied with your?
Yeah, well, I, I understand progress, you know, but I was just concerned that-
Wires.
Yeah, the wires, underground wiring, I was like, you know, because I, was before, before you guys tied 109, I thought there'd be a T when they first went down 109 back in the early 80s. They didn't. They didn't put a T because I guess Peter Peshaw was happy with septic and, because I was looking, if there was a T, it'd be perfect, you know, right on the end of my property, but, so I'm going to have to cut into the town, into the road to get, to make a T to get into tie sewer, and so that was my concern, I just was, wanted to make sure that, you know, I knew what was going on, because when I read it, it sounded like there were underground cables.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come.
Yeah, really.
Thanks, I feel better now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I make a motion to, Michael, that's why we have these public hearings, a lot of times it's repetition, 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 but then you got individuals with good concerns and good questions that need the answers, and that's why we have them, and I really appreciate you coming in, because that's a, that would be a concern.
Oh, it would have been, oh, some finding, now I got underground cables after D vo, so, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And I do make a motion to accept any repairs or alterations.
Thank you, sir, and I would gladly second that and make that unanimous.
Sure.
Okay, our next, under public hearings, is a petition from National Grid and Verizon again to install one JO pole on Beaver Street Extension at a point approximately 450 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Medway Road. They also seek permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Mr. Parent?
Again, same thing here, voltage regulating equipment, intermediary between the poles that are there, I believe it's across from the hotel on the, on the other side of the street though, I think where the Plaza is, or the Stein shop, it's in a, an area over there, in line with their poles.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
No, I do not.
Chris, anybody on public hearing?
Not for that pole.
Okay. Sorry, Paul, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you know, that's fine. I do make a motion then to accept the, and approve the installation of the pole, or whatever repairs or alterations that have to be done that Mr. Parent just described.
All right, thank you. Anybody in the general audience? Not seeing any, I would second that and make that unanimous. And the last one that we have for polls is, again, National Grid and Verizon to install one JO pole on South Main Street at approximately 115 feet north of the center line of the intersection of South Main Street and Depot Street. They also seek permission to lay underground, permission to underground laterals, cables, and wires. Mr. Parent?
So this is the start of the new tie-in to the substation, it comes from the substation which is on Depot Street, comes across South Main Street, and then starts up there. This pole, normally, same situation guying, normally we would have a pole on the west side of South Main Street with an anchor behind it, holding it back, but there must be some issue why they couldn't do that over there, or get, get a pressure for the anchor. So this pole is on the other side of the street, and it will have a push brace on it, pushing the pole back instead of pulling it back on the other side, it's going to push the pole back in that direction so that the tension doesn't pull it back the other way.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why that pole's necessary there.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
No, thank you.
Chris, anybody in public hearings?
Not for that one.
Okay, thank you. And anybody in the general audience for the pole on Beaver Street, I'm sorry, on South Main Street? Not seeing anybody, could I entertain a motion, please?
A motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the work that has to be done on that pole on South Main Street, and described as Mr. Parent just did.
Okay, and I will second that and make that unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Parent, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Okay, our next public hearing, we're going to delay, we're waiting for a selectman or law firm, unfortunately, is stuck in traffic, so we're going to pass over that one temporarily. We're going to move to our next agenda item, which is scheduled appointments, and our first scheduled appointment-
Actually, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we could, you guys went a lot faster than I anticipated. Perhaps we could go, I'll do a quick town administrative report, and then we'll go to new business.
Okay.
Because-
That would be fine.
Hope people will allow it, my apologies.
That's okay, that's okay. Go right ahead, so we're going to do the town administrator's report, which-
Yeah, I just have one item, one quick item tonight, it's a repeat item. Again, I just want to let people know, the Comprehensive Plan Theory meeting again will be next Monday, May 13, Milford Upper Town Hall at 7:00 PM. This is an introduction to the Comprehensive Plan. This will be an opportunity for residents to maybe express their vision for the town as to what should be included in the plan. There are challenges and opportunities there for the town, so we want to welcome the public to come. We will have interactive exercises to learn about what residents might want to be included in the plan, and we will have some light refreshments, and there will be interpretation for those who need it. So, again, this is, I know the third time I've mentioned it, but it is next week, Upper Town Hall, Monday, 7:00 PM, May 13.
Thank you very much. Any questions on that, Paul?
Nope, we're going to get ready for that, because I'm, that, myself and Rick are on the committee.
Correct, correct. Okay. With that, Rick, do any, we'll go to the next agenda item, which is old business, Mr. Paul, do you have any old business?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I do not as well, and with that, we'll, want to move to new business, Mr. Paul?
I'm going to go to new business, a select board member or law firm is about five minutes away from what I'm seeing here on the phone.
All right, so just so the general public, if you are following the agenda, the last public hearing agenda, we are putting on hold, waiting for a selectman or law firm, again, who is stuck in traffic. Scheduled appointments, we're moving ahead of schedule tonight, so we're going to bump over, jump over scheduled appointments for a little bit, so the people that are involved in scheduled appointments get here, okay? We've done the town administrator's report, we have no old business, so we're going to go to agenda item F, which is new business. Okay, and in new business, the first agenda that we're, first item under new business is the Milford 4th of July Parade Committee. Okay, let's see what we got here. Okay, so the Milford 4th of July Committee seeks permission, their annual 4th of July Parade will start from Veterans Memorial Drive, Route 109, and will follow Main Street to Route 16, to the Milford Police Department, which is 250 Main Street, starting at 10:00 AM on July 4. Any questions, Mr. Matt, Paul?
No, like I said, this, this committee, I can tell you, they're a real credit to Milford. When they started this several years ago, the Milford 4th of July Parade, and it's become very successful, and, you know, the crowds that they have there, within long, throughout the past years, they even had carnivals and whatnot, so they really got our residents in the spirit of celebrating the 4th of July. So like I says, I credit them for their good work, good group of individuals that make up that organization, and I'll definitely make a motion to approve this application, Mr. Chairman.
And I would, I would second that application, I would second that as well, and make that unanimous. Okay, next new business item we have is the Department of Veteran Services, the permission to obstruct memorial for the Memorial Day Parade. Memorial Day Parade on May 27, 2024, at 9:30 AM. The Assembly of Divisions on Veterans, the Assembly will start on Veterans Memorial Drive beside the IHOP restaurant, steps off at 10:00 AM, and marches up East Main Street to Calzone Park for a brief ceremony, continues up Main Street to Draper Memorial Park for a speaking program. And this has been approved by Police Chief Robert Tassino.
Mm-hmm. I have no questions regarding this application, like I said, this is a, an event that happened for several years, I mean, for many years, in, 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 in the past, and it's a, a great tribute to our, our veterans, especially those who gave their lives for us by serving in, in the armed services. And I thank Mr. Pillar and his department, as well as other veterans that participate in this as well, and are definitely wholeheartedly asked for approval of this application.
I couldn't agree more with the comments.
Okay, thank you, and I would make that unanimous. Okay, next- Okay, thank you. And I would make that unanimous. Okay, next, their item under new business is the Italian American War Veterans Club, a one-day liquor license or state convention for the Veterans Post. Okay, this is an application by the Italian American Veterans Club. Type of organization, it's a nonprofit. Their location is 4 Haywood, Haywood Field. Type of event, state convention for the Veterans Post. They're going to hold it at the Grassiero next to the Bachi Court. It's Saturday, June 8, 2024, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Expected number of people, roughly somewhere around 100. It will be an event that all alcohol will be present, alcohol will be sold, and the event is open to the general public. Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, Mr. Chair. I'm in favor.
And I would make that unanimous. Next is St. Mary's Parish, a one-day liquor license, one-day entertainment license. And this is a one-day application for St. Mary's Parish, again, a nonprofit corporation located at 17 Winter Street in Milford. There's a fundraiser banquet, wood dancing, to be held at St. Mary's Parish Center, a large hall. The property is owned, of course, by the Bishop of Worcester. It's to be held on Saturday, May 11, 2024. The hours of the event are 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM. Expected number of people is around 250. There isn't a mission charge of $35. Under 12 years of age is 15. There will be alcohol present, alcohol will be sold, and the event is open to the general public. Do you have a motion?
A motion, Mr. Chair, but I remember what Selectmen Olafman said, usually dozen cases like this, which makes a lot of sense, is for the hours of event, we'll go an hour earlier. Instead of four, 5:30, we'll go 4:30. And, you know, for them to have time to get the event ready, and from 10:30, make that 11:30, for them to have a chance to break down and, you know, be on their way. I agree. And I'm in favor.
And I would make that unanimous. Next is an application by Noble Brazil, looking for a common, common vicula license. Noble Brazil, 7 Medway Street, Unit 9B. Seeking has applied for a common vicula license. The building commissioner, CC Zone, allowable use, Group B use and occupancy, building and restrooms are accessible. Town planner, okay, no change of actual use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire chief has no objections. Police chief has approved it, and the Board of Health has approved as well. Kelly, any questions?
No questions. As I said, like you said, Michael, paperwork is, is in order. Everything seems to be on, in, in, in line for this, so I make a motion to approve the application for a new common vickers license for Noble Brazil at 7 Medway Road, Unit B.
I'm in favor of that, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous. The next is an appointment to the Commission on Disability. This is a question from Julie Gonzalez, who is, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, the clinical nurse in charge of the-
No, she is the position of disability, I think she is a nurse, but she's-
Right.
Position of disability chair.
And she's looking to appoint Ruth McCain, McDate?
McDate.
McDate.
McDate, okay.
Having trouble with the Irish name, son?
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah. Okay, so an application to appoint Ruth McDate to the Disability Commission. Do I have a motion?
A motion, Mr. Chair. She, this, Ms. McDate seems to be very well qualified for this position, and it was also requested by the committee chair, and I'm sure the other members of the, of the committee also had some input as, as well. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Julie Gonzalez to appoint Ruth McDate as part of the commission.
Especially with her background as a lawyer in Ireland-
In Ireland, yeah.
2010, working on disabilities.
Yes.
You know, as far as advocating for people with disabilities.
Exactly.
She's the only talent they got, which is that.
I am in favor, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Okay, now, last item under new business is, under our department head review form, is Selya Group LLC doing business at McDonald's, 139 South Main Street in Milford. They're seeking an amendment to their common vicula license, which is a change of hours. The building commissioner, CC Zone, allowable use, Group A3 use and occupancy, building and restrooms are accessible. Town planner, okay, no change of actual use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire chief has no objections. Police chief approves, and the Board of Health approves as well. Mr. Mazza Kelly?
No, no further comments. Like I says, like you said too, Mr. Chair, all paperwork is in order. We're only asking for a change of hours, so I make a motion that we accept the change of hours for the Selya Group LLC doing business at McDonald's, 139 South Main Street regarding the change of hours that are listed in the application.
Chairman, I'm in favor of that.
And with that, I would make that unanimous. Okay, and with that, Mr. Valani, if you're okay, do you want to move back to finish our public hearings?
Still, it's still ahead of the game. We have to stop that at 6:45.
We can-
Mr. Paul, real quick.
Sure. Do Mr. Pillar?
Yep. He's executive session, is he?
Huh?
Hold on. Is that exec?
No, 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 this is, he's going to talk in about a couple digits and opens things.
Oh, very good.
Chris?
Okay, again, I apologize to the general public, if you are following our agenda. We're kind of moving around a little bit here. So we are going to move back up to Agenda Item C, which is scheduled appointments. And our first item under scheduled appointments is the town treasurer on the collector's position. Mr. Pillar, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm excited about the opportunity to combine the treasurer's office and the collector's office together, starting July 1. So I wanted to come in front of you with an action plan on how the two offices will run going forward. So first, in your packet, I gave an organizational chart.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, you'll have the treasurer collector, and then underneath the treasurer collector position, you'll have a separate assistant collector and a separate assistant treasurer. Both are positions now, with the exception of this assistant collector. The assistant collector is technically the deputy tax collector. Assuming you can pass our certification in August with your support and permission, I would approach the personnel board to have the assistant collector position created and rated, and then obviously put her into that, that position. Under the collect, on the collector's side, under the assistant collector, there's an administrative specialist and a substitute part-time clerk already there, so nothing will change there. And on the treasurer's side, we already have an assistant treasurer and we have an administrative specialist. So there's no positions being added. I feel that we have enough staff between the two offices to handle all the day-to-day work, so I'm not, not seeking anything on that end. Let's see. So, the office dynamics, starting July 1, and even right now, it's going to be kind of a little hard for me. Clearly, I'm one person, so I can't be in two offices at once. So my, my plan right now is to be in the collector's office Monday and Thursday, the treasurer's office Tuesday and Wednesday, and Fridays. Clearly, on the due dates for the collector's side, on the tax collecting side, I'll be down in the collector's office. Hopefully, we can eventually merge the two offices, whether if we're taking over another office, moving to a different building or, or something. But a true treasurer collector's office, all, everybody's into one, and that will allow me to have my administrative specialists cross-trained to take counterpayments, to do some of the day-to-day stuff that they can do together. Right now, they'll be in separate offices, so I'd physically have to send one down. Training, again, I'm going to cross-train on certain functions. There's not going to be a lot that some of them can get into because of the confidentiality. The collector's side won't get into payroll or the accounts payables, but everybody's going to be working at the counter. Everybody will take phone calls. Customer service is basically where they'll be cross-trained.
Sure.
Eventually, I would like my two assistants to get trained on each other's side in case of other retirements or, or something, if we ever combine the assistant collector and treasurer to an assistant treasurer collector.
Good.
And then technology. One of the goals is going to be to enhance our technology within the departments, so we can start offering online payments. People can view their bills. We can take more than a credit card at that, at the fee that currently is, is there. I am going to ask Chris George to put some cameras up over the counter right now for safety issues. Right now, we don't have anything, so that will be another thing. We are currently converting our tax software to QDS. This was a software that had, we've had for quite a few years. It's now changing names and getting upgraded, so that's currently being converted next week. And then when we go over, we'll, we'll hit the ground running. Eventually, when the offices are combined, I plan to have more online resources where someone could actually come in and swipe their card, paying a bill on a computer, but right now, I can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
So those are just some of the objectives I had. Obviously, as I get more into the role and familiar with the collector's side, I will update my, the office as I see fit.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, Chris, thank you. Remember, I think it was the last meeting, we discussed this to, this was the, the introduction to it that we had last meeting. And like we said, you know, it's not a revolutionary concept. There are other municipalities that are, in fact, doing this with much success. And it seems as though that you're doing some research on it, and you seem to have a grasp on it as well. I don't know if Mike remembers, but several years ago, when we were both on the school committee, we did that same thing with the business administration, with the business administrator and the assistant superintendent. We combined both those positions together. And by merging the positions together, we saved quite a few dollars on that as well. And the efficiency was still the same, if not a little better, because you had one person doing two jobs who knew what they were doing, such as yourself. And, and, and that's a big help. So it's not only cost-saving, it's, it's efficient, and it's something that I'm, I'm looking forward to and, and, you know, and I have very high degree of confidence that it's going to, that it's going to work out. And, and thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Just to echo Mike all the, Paul Mazza Kelly, I couldn't agree with him more. I think, you know, you, you were notified one day, and you picked up the ball, and you've been running with it since. So I really want to thank you. This listing of things you want to accomplish, goals and objectives is pretty, pretty, you got a lot of work there, but the fact that you recognize it, and, and there's no doubt you can accomplish each and every one of these things, I just want to commend you. I really appreciate you putting this together. It's as concise as can be, but it's, it's actually, you know, quite a volume of things you're trying to accomplish. So, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, the first question that I have for you is, as you know, you can occupy two spaces at the same time. The, excuse me, the office situation, is that something that you are going to work on, on your own, or you're waiting for the board and Mr. Valani to find space for you to merge in town hall? Do you have a plan on-
So I did have-
You can't work out of two offices?
Yeah, no, I, I did have a plan. I briefly mentioned it to Mr. Valani.
We're working on it.
We're working.
Okay. I just don't want, I don't want you to be held up because of-
No, no, how should we come to the board and do it?
Yeah, we, yeah. It's, it's going to be, for the first couple of months, it will be tough until we can come up with a game plan, but we, we are constantly talking about it, and we, we understand the, the need to be in one office. If you go to probably most of the other 300 towns that have a treasurer collector, it's, it's one office.
Right, right. And again, I'm going, as I did the last meeting, I commend Mr. Valani and yourself for having the, the thought process to, we, a great opportunity to take advantage of that opportunity and merge the two offices together. It makes perfect sense. And, you know, it's just, the timing is right, and we just, you know, now that we're moving forward, we want to, we want to move forward in the right direction. I know there's going to be some hiccups, hiccups and everything, but we want to just make sure that, you know, your, you know, yourself and your offices and Mr. Valani aren't stuck because of some internal situation that maybe the board can get involved. And so, but again, thank you. I looked at, you know, your objectives and your flow chart. I couldn't agree with you more. You know, I've dealt with you since I, you know, was lucky enough to get on the Board of Selectmen, and I find you to be a top-notch person and very capable, so I know we're going to be in good hands.
Thank you.
I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, just do the foreclosure auctions very quick.
Yep.
So, that, Chris?
Yep.
Yeah, where should you go in?
Okay.
Isn't he going to be here tonight?
Oh, that's true, too. You can't go home. Might as well be there.
That's fine.
That's right.
So Thursday, May 30, we're going to have our, our second auction for the town of Milford. We're going to be auctioning off two properties, 41 Beaver Street, which currently has a house there, and 52 Emin Street, which had an existing house but had to be condemned and, and torn down. Both were tax foreclosures, so we are following the Chapter 60 and 59 statutes of the, of the law. Some things that we have to worry about, recently, the Supreme Court has declared the Massachusetts state laws unconstitutional. Currently, there's no legislation to correct this. There is legislation in the works. I've been in plenty of meetings with that. There is a bill that's going to be filed, and that's going to work. In the meantime, what will happen is if one property, for say, for an example, owes $100,000 in taxes, and we sell the property for $200,000, we will be able to keep the $100,000 immediately plus some additional costs, and then the rest, I'll have to put it into an interest-bearing account for the owner to come and make a claim to, to gain the excess equity. We don't have to do that, but it's just going to save us a headache down the road. So I'm just going to be proactive and do it right off the bat. This Ecos Group is going to be our auctioneer. Our tax title attorneys, Capola and Capola, are going to handle the purchase and sale and the closings.
Okay. So that is on, on both properties?
Yep.
Beaver Street and the other street. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I was going to say, no, thank you for that and the information you just gave us, too. And like I was always told, there's a human side to every law and regulation as well, and I think that makes sense, too. Also, too, I want to commend you, too, for that Beaver Street property. I remember reviewing that with you and, and, and the board in, in the past, and I guess a, a bona fide effort was made, and I think a successful effort was made, to actually find housing for the individual as, as well. So I thought that was very nice, and like I said, it makes it, it softens the blow, you know, for this particular individual, and I thank you for that. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
May 30, someone else is going to own the property, right? Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, do we need a motion on that, Rick?
I believe that we already started, started a motion to authorize it.
All right. Okay. Okay, you want to continue through scheduled appointments and complete those, or do you want, see, it's after?
You ready to go? Do we want to do it now?
Yeah.
I mean, we did say we'd do it now.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, again, for the general public, so we are going to, from out of scheduled appointments, we're going to go back up to the last item on public hearings, which is CT Bar Corporation doing business to Central Tavern, you know, it's a licensing hearing. And with us tonight is attorney Melanie Solomon, and I apologize, the owner of Central Tavern. And I apologize, the owner of Central Tavern.
Donnie DeSilva.
Donnie DeSilva.
Okay. Okay, real, okay. This is a, again, this is a public hearing, so we're reopening the public hearing session. This is a hearing. Please take notice that the select board will hold the hearing pursuant to general law 138, Section 64, another applicable law of, at 6:45 PM in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass., on Monday, May 6, 2024. At which hearing, the select board will consider whether or not to modify, suspend, or revoke the license issued for the establishment referred to as Central Tavern. And with that, Attorney Solomon, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Robbie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The police chief to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
... presentment to the board in terms of what the issues were going to happen.
Yeah, so in reading this, understand that there are certain things I'm vague on that's intentional. So if, you know what I mean, it seems like I'm stopping and leaving some stuff out, there's a reason for that. So on April 17, 2024, approximately 23:12 hours, that's basically quarter past 11:00. The Milford Police received a call from the Central Sports Bar and Grill. This is 31 Central Street, right at the top of the hills, you crest down in Milford on the right-hand side, coming off of Main Street. Officers were initially called there for a patron refusing to pay, someone refusing to pay their tab. This is not something that we really, you know, there's not a lot of concern with things. This happens a lot with establishments through town. This is nothing new, and sometimes it's a misunderstanding. Somebody has a missed, for lack of a better word, appropriation of funds. And a lot of times, the police can show up on scene and remedy that situation, but... So the Milford officers responded to scene. They showed up at the location, entered the premise, and they spoke with the calling party, who was the bartender, and they were given a description of a male who was wearing floral design shirts, a purple baseball hat and shorts. And he came in around 21:00 hours, which is 9:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, came in, left without paying his tab. And the gentleman actually said that he would go get some money and, you know, come back. And I don't know if the bartender thought his claim was less than dubious and sincere, but he wanted the police to come down and speak to this gentleman. So the gentleman left the location. Where this gets a little disconcerting is when the gentleman left, he drove the wrong way up Central Street, which is a one-way street. And left going up Central Street onto Main Street, subsequently took the left-hand turn on Main Street. The bartender at the bar did go outside, tried to get as much information as he could, tried to get a plate, relayed description of the vehicle to officers. The Milford Police Department canvassed the area with negative results. As this kind of evolved, the Hopedale Police, receiving the, you know, beyond-the-lookout report from Milford, interacted with the individual, spotted the vehicle, and the vehicle was driving with two flat tires on it. There was a motor vehicle stop that occurred in Hopedale. I have the Hopedale report here, and again, I'm being vague for a reason. The person was detained and then placed under arrest for operating without a license and, you know, is subsequently facing charges for OUI. The person was actually transported to Milford Hospital due to the level of impairment that was concerning the officers on scene and the fact that he was vomiting excessively from his intoxication, they believed. And again, like I said, was transported to Milford Hospital, where the hospital staff had a little bit of an issue with him. He was a little non-compliant with a couple of things that the staff was trying to get done. Ultimately, he wasn't assaultive or anything like that with the staff. Officers stayed with him. He was taken back to the Hopedale Police Station around 05:00, you know, 5:00 AM for the rest of us, and was booked, you know, again, for the OUI. He's, you know, facing the criminal charges for the OUI and leaving a scene in a motor vehicle accident without stopping. So that's what happened, started what we believe started at Central Sports Bar and Grill on Central Street. And, you know, there was concerns about if it was noticed that he was intoxicated when he showed up. Again, we have a receipt and, you know, we're not disputing that receipt, that he was served three Heinekens at the establishment. But as we all know, the establishment has a certain responsibility, and I've involved in many cases where people come in and they don't serve them at all. You know, because if people, for lack of a better word, are going bar hopping, it's on that establishment to do their due diligence with all the patrons they encounter. So that's really our concern and our position is that, you know, there was a level of intoxication and impairment just when he stepped into the place. And that's indicative to us by driving the wrong way up Central Street. It's kind of a big deal.
Absolutely.
It's a bit bad.
Turn it to-
Anyone has any questions?
Not right now, Brian. I think I read the reports and whatnot of everything that Robbie was doing. You know, just a comment, you know, where it was more or less almost proven through the receipts that this individual probably only had three Heinekens, but the condition he was in, for a lack of a better word, he was a total mess. I mean, and not only driving up a one-way street, but driving on three tires, then two tires. Then according to the Hopedale Police Report, he was also in Hockington. I guess he almost had an accident with a lady who called the police in Hockington. And then, you know, how sick he was, you know, the excessive vomiting to the point where blood was actually coming up as well. Like I said, it's, like I said, I don't know if three Heinekens can actually have that much effect on one person that quick too, you know? So again, that's a question that I have, and I'll wait till we go on and hear both sides too as well.
Tom?
I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. And at this time, I don't have any questions as well, so we turn it over to-
If Attorney Solomon wants the opportunity to ask the chief any questions, now would be the time to give her that opportunity.
I have no questions for the chief.
Okay.
It will be up to the license holder and Attorney Solomon to address the board.
Right. Please go right ahead.
So on the date in question, the individual who was on the premises, somebody that I can let you know that the bar owner and his bartender were not familiar with this individual. In speaking with my client, it is somebody who was new to them. The gentleman came into the bar, as you heard the chief say, and as supported by the receipt, the gentleman had three Heinekens in an estimated period of about two hours. I think what's telling is, as noted within the report, the gentleman seemed to have his cognitive faculties together to the extent that he was able to communicate with the establishment, that he intended to leave to go get money to pay his tab. There was no indication that any information was elicited from the bartender, that the patron appeared to have any impairment at the time that he was communicating, or even at the time that he entered the bar and asked to be served. My client, from being here on November 20th, very much recalls his obligation under his bar license and has trained his staff so that his staff can identify if somebody comes in and they're impaired, they're not to be served, and they're also requested to leave the establishment. On the date in question, the bartender absolutely did the right thing in the first instance. When the gentleman left the establishment, he did immediately contact the police department, which for somebody who holds a license would be their first response, and you should not engage and call the police department, and they did that. They did not chase this person down. They did not look to have a confrontation with them. The bartender did the right thing and actually went to try to get information to give to the police related to this individual. I think what is telling is, when you take a look at the period of time that passed from the time he came into the establishment, from the time that he left, the condition that he was on scene, and then the condition that he was in the hospital, this gentleman spiraled in a manner that was so quick in such a short period of time that it does not, in my legal opinion, seem to be consistent with consumption of alcohol, even if he had presumptively consumed alcohol at a location prior to coming to Central. The fact that he had three beers in a period of time and did not indicate any illness or impairment in the establishment, but after he left, it took about 30 minutes for police to have contact with him. We do not know what he was in possession of in his vehicle. We do not know if he ingested anything illicit prior to entering the establishment or after he left the establishment. But for that period of 30 minutes after he left, and it indicates in the report the time that the call was dispatched, the estimated time around 23:40, when they interacted with him in Hopedale, that's a significant period of time. When he was communicating with the police, he was able to communicate with them where he was and what he had consumed. Again, there does not, from my review of the police report, to be any evidence to suggest that in communicating that he exhibited a level of impairment where he could not say where he was coming from and could not say what he had consumed at the location, which was Central Tavern. He then further escalated from the time that he had interacted with the police to the time that he had been to the hospital, to the extent that he had a vomit bag placed on his face and he was vomiting blood. So my concern for my client is, my client did the right thing on the date in question. His staff did the right thing and contacted the police. Is it abnormal for somebody to, on a one-way street, even if you didn't know it was one-way, but you saw all of the vehicles faced in a direction that would let you know that? Is it abnormal that he would turn right onto Central Street instead of turning left? Yes, I would agree with that. But what I would say is, there's no indication to my client that this gentleman was familiar with Central Street, especially them having seen him for the first time on the date in question. My client nor the bartender can answer for this gentleman's inability to operate his vehicle in a safe manner such that he left with flat tires. Did he leave that way? Did he strike a curb? What exactly occurred? And not what we presume occurred, but what actually occurred that caused those tires to be flat. But at the end of the day, the burden that my client has is notifying the police, ensuring that he didn't over-serve, ensuring that he gets somebody off-premise if they enter the establishment impaired. He did not enter the establishment appearing impaired. He was not over-serve. He had only been served three Heinekens in an estimated two-hour period of time. The police were immediately contacted thereafter. So the concern that I have for my client is, given the passage of time, is the responsibility really on Central Tavern for what occurred on this evening in violation of their license? When there is an estimated 30-minute gap where we don't know what this gentleman could have ingested, and if he did elicit something, if he did ingest something illicit and did it with alcohol, could that rise to the level of the impairment that we saw? And I would say absolutely. I'm appreciative of the information that I have from the town, where the town makes the assumption that he was clearly impaired. Obviously, we know something occurred. Whether he was clearly impaired from alcohol or an illicit drug, we don't know. And from the letter that we have from the Milford Police Department from Detective Sergeant Kevin Loughlin, we do know that there was some sort of test that was administered to the now defendant in the case to assess his impairment, but the tool used to get that information is scientifically inadmissible in a court of law. So it asks that the board take that into consideration when you take a look at somebody's impairment, and you're going to make an assumption that they were impaired on the legal limit, what method was used to get that information? And it's not something that's scientifically admissible. So it would ask that, while the board is here to consider whether there should be a modification, suspension, or revocation, I would ask that no action be taken, because my client did everything that he was supposed to do on the date in question. And essentially, if action were taken, he would be found responsible for somebody's actions that most likely occurred off-premise after the gentleman left.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, Attorney Solomon, that was one of my concerns that you just touched upon too, which that he blew 0.16, which is double what is, you know, the standard. Anything over that, you're considered impaired. Was it 0.08?
Yeah, 0.08 is-
Right, right. So like I says, I mean, that's double the amount that he should have, and I wasn't too familiar with what apparatus that was used. Chief, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, it was a portable breath test, and certainly counsel brings up a good point, but I'll submit this. We're not trying the OUI, okay? The PBT by law is admissible for determining intoxication when it comes to protective custody and those things. We're not trying the OUI case here. You know, counsel is 100% right. In a court of law with the OUI, it's not entered in. But as far as determining somebody's, you know, level of intoxication, not for prosecution, it's admissible all day long. And especially when you're talking about like protective custody, when we have people on the, you know, who we find outside, and we don't want to take them into protective custody, we use the PBT. You know, there's various case laws that we use the PBT to determine somebody's intoxication. So although I do agree with counsel, we're not trying the OUI here. So those are things you have to remember. We're not trying an OUI.
Yeah, I asked that because I wanted to get, you know-
I understand, it's a certification, yeah.
-like an idea of how actually intoxicated this individual was. You know, like I said, double the amount that is, you know, that has for the lower standard, you know? And I know, like you get, would three Heinekens do that? You know, so which, you know, would be, and I don't know what he did afterwards, and then again, you would know yourself if, how this individual came into the place and what now, was he staggering? Was he acting obnoxious? Was he slurring? You know, these are certain things that I believe someone who took the TIPS training would now be able to identify someone who was on the verge of not being served another drink.
I think something else that's notable is, when you do the PBT, whether it's a PBT or a BT, and the BT is what is scientifically reliable, it actually measures the concentration of alcohol in your mouth. So if this gentleman had left the establishment and had any alcohol in his vehicle, doesn't matter what the police found, he could have had something in his vehicle that he disposed of while he was driving for the estimated 30 minutes before he was pulled over, that concentration of alcohol in his mouth would have been greater upon an immediate consumption of an alcoholic beverage versus an estimated 30 minutes prior, when he had left the establishment after having three beers over a period of two hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not in need of any further information. I just, I mean, my concern is, I don't believe you get to 0.158, three Heinekens over a The PBT, I agree with what the chief said as far as, you know, can we consider it in an administrative hearing like this? I think we can. However, in considering it, I think we have to be cautious of the fact that this isn't a PBT as, you know, my friend, the chief indicated, someone that you're going to place in protective custody until they sober up, and then you send them out the door to go home, or give them a ride home at that point. The question here tonight is, are we going to take away his business based upon this We don't have any information, and Paul, you asked a very, very good question. We have no information whatsoever of anyone saying what this individual looked like when he went into the establishment. We don't know if he had consumed alcohol or something else before going in. We know 35 minutes afterward that he is at least in the town of Hopedale and blew up two tires on his vehicle, probably hit a curb. You know, I think the bartender did everything the regulations say for him to do. He didn't confront the individual. He didn't get in a, you know, a scuffle with him over $18. Yes, he wanted the $18. Rather, he went out to observe the individual. He gave a description to the police. He gave a description of the vehicle. He just couldn't catch the plate because the individual went the wrong way up Central Street from what the bartender indicated to the police. At least for me, I don't see how I can reach a conclusion that there's a violation here. I don't think the facts, the whole puzzle's not there. You don't know anything about the individual, as my colleague, Paul Mazakelli, raised, what he looked like when he went into the establishment. We most certainly know- We most certainly know what he looked like 35 minutes later after he left the establishment over a two-hour period. I just don't think there's sufficient evidence to discipline.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just one other thing too, Attorney Solomon, and also our police chief too as well. You know, we're, fortunately, I don't run into a lot of people that do this all the time, you know? I haven't in the past, you know, growing up, but not recently. And so what I would have to do is go on with an individual that has, that does this quite often, such as the police department, and it seems like in their report, they did put, and it appears to be with a high degree of certainty, "The silver was clearly over-serve", is the actual words that they used. And like I says, they're the ones that are trained in this much more than I am, and I have to go by what I read in their reports. They're the ones who observed this person, you know, at the time, and I'm sure they ran into many individuals that were over-serve in their time as a police officer as well. So that's, again, as a layperson, when it comes to something like this, this is what I'm reading and this is what I'm understanding.
Thank you. And I will ask, the town council, I do have a couple of questions as well. If I get into a gray area, you'll advise me?
Oh, cool, yeah. No, this is the time for the board to deliberate and discuss the issues that you see pertinent with, as the board's doing.
So as my two colleagues mentioned, we have nothing that states what the gentleman looked like when he entered the premises. Aren't there video cameras in the presence in the establishment?
There is.
And has anybody looked at the video to see when the gentleman entered?
They don't record it. They only record for a couple of days only and it gets deleted, so... But I can probably get footage of the day that...
Well, my question would be is that if the argument that we have is that we don't know what the gentleman was like when he entered, why haven't we looked at the video? So that we can say that we know what the gentleman, was he staggering? Was he fine when he ordered his first Heineken? Was he okay? Was he not okay?
I asked my bartender that once working that day, that night, and he said he was fine as soon as he got in, served him the three beers and didn't want to pay his bill and decided to leave, and he didn't want to believe that he was going to come back and pay his bills, so...
Okay.
That's why he called the police right away, and that's what I told him. Anything that happens at the bar that you don't feel safe, call the police and hopefully take it from there.
Okay. The other question I have, and we talk about the breathalyzer, but when the gentleman ended up at Milford Hospital, was there any other kind of test done at Milford Hospital to determine his accurate alcohol or drug content?
No, he gave them a hard time at the hospital. He wasn't compliant. And again, he wasn't assaulted, wasn't abusive, but he wasn't letting them...
So we questioned the equipment that the Milford Police Department used, but when the Milford Hospital tried to do a test that was going to be very accurate, the gentleman refused to have that test done, correct?
Correct. But that's not something that respectfully my client would be able to answer to, be able to intervene on if the board's position based upon the report is this gentleman was so unbelievably impaired that, you know, he obviously got into an incident. I can't even have my client speak as to this gentleman's state of mind as to why he may not have consented to certain diagnostic testing by the ER department.
I understand that, Attorney Solomon. What I'm trying to get to is that the equipment that was used has been put into question. And so when we tried to administer to the gentleman an accurate test, basically for argument, say, he refused. He got combative.
But I don't know, my client has no basis of knowledge of what tests he might have been asked to do. That would have been kind of client information that my client wouldn't know, and my understanding of the law generally speaking is, once he's in the custody of the hospital, I don't even know if the hospital has the authority to release to the police department exactly what diagnostic testing that is being done unless certain legal maneuvers are done to get this gentleman's medical records. But I would just draw your attention again, when we're talking about impairment, we're talking when he's in the hospital. We are well after the time that he has departed the establishment. And if we're going to rely on the police report as Slidperson Mazakelli had indicated, just from the narrative from Officer Santoni in paragraph two, you know, he is speaking to the bartender, and the bartender had a conversation with the patron where the patron was able to communicate cognitively and speak to him and say, "This is what I'm going to do. I'm going to go to the ATM and get you money." That tells me that the gentleman's state of mind at that time was enough that he knew that he didn't have in his possession enough money to pay his bill, that he needed to go somewhere to get cash to pay his bill, and that he was able to articulate that to the establishment without any signs of impairment as to the bartender.
And you are aware, Attorney Solomon, you have the report in front of you. I find it a little bit unusual. I give the gentleman credit that he was going to leave the establishment to go get money to pay his bill, but it's right in the report, it states that the male party ran. He didn't walk towards Main Street, he ran towards Main Street. Well, if he was going to get money to pay his bill, why? Just a question.
I mean, I know that according to the report and me speaking to my client, that this was at a time when it was, they were getting ready to close the bar and they told everybody that they had to pay their tab. So whether that was related to the fact that the gentleman felt that he needed to expeditiously go get his money or not, I don't know. But then that begs the further question, if this gentleman was able to successfully leave the establishment and run? I'm still further questioning his impairment at that time, if he was able to do that without tripping and falling on his face.
And the other point that I'd like to make is that, and maybe he did, but did the gentleman arrive at the establishment with two flat tires on his car?
I don't know that my client would have a basis of knowledge for that. They're inside the establishment at the time serving their patrons. If he was parked in the municipal lot that's across the street and behind the businesses on the other side of the street, my client has no obligation to inspect the vehicles of the patients as they enter, so I don't think that he would have a basis of knowledge.
Right. And I can respect, you know, your opinion and what you're saying. The question that I personally have is that, and I understand the 30 minutes, but for the gentleman to end up at Milford Hospital in the state that he was in, you know, and that's why I would be interested to see if anybody, and I'm surprised that nobody has, looked at the video in the establishment to see what the gentleman looked like when he walked through the door? What did he look like when he walked through the door? And what did he look like when he left the establishment? I would think that that would be something that we would look at, you know, when we're in this situation questioning this. You know, do I, you know, three Heineken's? You know? But I just find it, you know, if you read the whole report, and I understand, counsel, you're lying heavily on the 30-minute time span, and not, you know, being an expert in that area, but again, you know, I would, personally, I would say the first thing that I would want to see is the video, and the next thing I would do, and I understand what the police chief is saying to us, that, you know, how the equipment that they use in the field is, but I know that the tests that are done at the hospital are very accurate. And maybe they could give us a little better understanding of, A, what was in the blood? Was it alcohol or was it alcohol and drugs? Okay? We know that he did have three beers at your establishment, so we do know that alcohol was in his blood, but then in fact, was there other, you know, substances in his blood, to your point, that may have caused it? We don't know that because the gentleman refused the test, or in the words of the police chief and the report, got combative. What did he get combative for?
And if I may on that, and this is with all due respect, please, no disrespect to the board, but you've just told me that you don't know, because what is in his blood? And you are also questioning what is in his blood. Could it have been drugs? So I think that you're also doubting, you know, what was contributing to this gentleman's physical state at the time.
Well, because I don't have the test.
Right, right.
The issue with the guy to the test, you'll note in the police report, he has the portable breath test. The police in charge of him with operating under offered him to come in and take the breathalyzer test. He refused. He has a right to refuse. You can't compel him. Sam, you have a choice of blood or breath. He gets to the hospital, he doesn't want drug, you know, blood drawn. You're not going to have blood drawn, so you're never going to get that information. I think that, you know, the question of how did he get there? How does his car look? Well, we know that he drove away from there at 11 o'clock and went up the wrong way up Central Street. So apparently, his two tires weren't blown out. And I don't disagree with you on the issue of the video, but the fact is, this is a hearing, we don't have video. We don't have anything in front of us that shows us what this individual looked like walking in the establishment so that we can assess whether or not the bartender made the right judgment. So we don't have, we don't have it. All we have is the bartender saying he was okay to the police officers.
In a receipt?
Correct.
What I was going to, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, what I was going to mention too, you know, when you really, when you mentioned it yourself too, when you said that, you know, this fellow wasn't familiar, no one was familiar with this individual. And that is more or less proven, because if people were, they probably would have given permission to go out to an ATM and get the money if they knew, if he was a regular customer and people knew who he was or were familiar with his attendance at this particular establishment, they would have been a little more relaxed with this person. So I can see how he was, for lack of a better word, a stranger coming into this place at that particular time.
You know, and Mr. Chairman, you know, the last time this establishment was here before us, I think, and I was the one that made the motion, we made it very clear that you have an episode to the level of what occurred during that hearing, that we would move to revoke the license. My sense is that they took notice of that. If the bartender went out to get a description and the bartender called the police, and I think that's what we want to happen. We want the establishment, the staff at the establishment, the ownership to work with the police department. And I think that this bartender, at least from what the police report, he went out to try to, he gave him a description of the individual, gave him a description of the car. Yes, they found him 35 minutes later and he's upside down. It's, how did he get there? And that's my thing. I don't know what he consumed. I know he consumed three Heineken's, and I know three Heineken's isn't going to put someone at a .158 over two-hour period. I don't see it.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
How many ounces in three Heineken's?
Wow.
Were these beer? Were these drafts or were they bottles?
Both bottles.
They were bottles?
Yeah.
Okay, what size of bottles you were serving?
Those would be, size probably eight.
You say probably eight. Was it eight or not?
Uh-huh, I don't know.
Well, they come in all different sizes, and then you talk about everything, you're talking, if you're talking...
Either 12 or 16.
Yeah, and then if you're talking, if you're talking draft...
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So it's only $18 at your establishment for three bottles of Heineken?
Yeah.
Wow!
But I can, like I said...
I'm upset I don't drink. I was going to say, that's impressive.
We have inventories, so I can show you guys what was sold that day. So cameras doesn't work, but I have inventory, so exactly what...
No, I just didn't know, and it's not specified here, because, you know, three beers at someplace, you know, you're talking, I can get 12 ounces, you know what I mean? I mean, three 12-ounce beers? If I drank three 12-ounce beers, you're carrying me out this place, carry me out of here. But if you tell me they're 8-ounce bottles, it's a different story.
Well, like I said, I have inventories. We can always look and provide you guys, as the chairman, as you guys can see what I sold that day, I can prove that, because everything's on a POS system, so everything is there, so...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. In the last time you were here, I think it was November, one of the November meetings, and you were going to get trained and extra help, and how did that work out?
We trained everybody, and he was the one that basically did most of the training, because when I bought the bar from the previous owner, he used to work for Michael. So he's been training with Michael since Michael owned it and basically came with the bar, because he's a good, one of the best bartenders we have.
Okay.
And I'll let you know too, that when Mr. De Silva came to me and we talked about this case, as you know, I've been in front of you before at other establishments, and I've talked to him about training, to make sure training was in place, so that if it wasn't, that I can talk to him about what I can do to help him. It's in place, and it seems to me, from what he represented to me and the way this bartender acted on this day, that they've done the right thing and that their staff are well aware of what their obligations are.
So you reviewed what they did and whatnot?
Yes, with my client.
Good.
And counsel, you feel that anybody that has been hired since the last hearing that you had with this gentleman, anybody that has, I understand his existing staff was trained under your guidelines. Anybody new that's been added to the establishment under employment, as far as you know, has been trained as well?
Not under my guidelines, but in my communication with my client, I trust his representations, that after what happened on November 20th, that everybody has been trained. I talked to Mr. De Silva about what the obligations are in the first instance, reaching out to the police, doing identification of patrons that come in impaired, not serving them and having them leave the establishment, issues about becoming confrontational with patrons, about serving the same training model essentially that I did with the other establishment when I was before you before, is what I reviewed with Mr. De Silva, and it is my belief upon his representations that that is in place. He would not have been able to answer my questions if it was not.
Okay, so then I would ask you that question, Mr. De Silva. Any new employees on the bar since your last hearing that weren't trained? Everybody has been...
They've been trained CPI.
Everybody's trained and it's in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what conversations or what training have you had with your staff since the second incident happened?
Since this accident, but he's the only one that's been working full-time, so he's the, actually the only one that speaks English, so I left him to be full-time working all the time, so...
Okay, but this gentleman, or this bartender, isn't the only bartender you have in your establishment, is it?
But every time there's new, somebody working new, he's right there next to them.
Training.
Training.
Okay.
He's always there all the time.
No, 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 I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. Since the second incident, this incident here, did you gather all your bartenders or your employees together and say, "Listen, we've had another incident"? You know, go over what happened, maybe tighten up your procedures with your employees, with your bartenders, you know, that, you know, yes, to Selectman O'Laughlin's point, you know, notified the police, went outside, tried to get information on the patron, tried to get information on the vehicle, but you as the owner, did you get everybody together and say, "Okay, well, we made improvements here, but maybe we need to make, you know, moving forward, we need to tweak things a little bit, you know, here's a real, this really happened to us, and yes, we did a better job than the first time, but this is what I, as the owner, see, that we can do, you know, a little bit better"? Have you had that conversation?
We had a meeting of the incident, what happened, and basically just kind of, when I got the report, showed everybody what happened and kind of talked to them about it, but I didn't have a formal, I was waiting for the meeting today, so...
Okay. And I hope you understand that, you know, as a board, we have a responsibility to the community.
I understand.
And somebody driving up Central Street the wrong way is, that's where I would start, you know? It's a pretty busy street, how do you, I mean, all the cars are going one direction, you're going the other? You know, and that's why I say, what, you know, what training, and I hope you have, and I hope, you know, tomorrow morning you get everybody together if you haven't, and said, "Listen, this is our second situation we've been for the board of Selectmen, and these are areas that we did better, but there are always areas that can be done better".
Yes, sir.
Paul, do you have any more questions?
Just what you just said, Mr. Chair, like, and there's always room for improvement, especially with something as serious as this. You know, to have an alcohol license is a prized privilege. You know, and like I says, we, when we allow you to have it or vote to accept your application and issue you one, we do it with a lot of trust in that individual that we give the license to. So like Mike said, there's always room for improvement, and, you know, it's something that you would learn from each experience that you have, that could have a negative consequence. You'll learn from what happened, how did it happen, and how can we improve on it? So that's something that I want to get across too, but...
And I've been doing that since the first incident. I've been hiring details for the busiest night and trying to, you know, do my best on security and everything. So basically, I have been doing my best as a bar owner.
Good, thank you.
Tom?
I have no further questions.
And if I may, when I say to you that we have an obligation to the community, I'll go even a couple of steps further in that, and I commend the employee for calling the police, but we as well have a responsibility to make sure that the men and women of the Milford Police Department, and I understand it's their job, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that the calls that they're going on don't go sideways because... to make sure that the calls that they're going on don't go sideways because we, you know, didn't do our, didn't do our job, didn't hold up our area responsibility into the nurses and doctors at the hospital. I wasn't there, I don't know how combative he was. But we have a responsibility to try and deliver people to that hospital that don't go in in that condition. How they got there, but to make sure that when they get there, because there's every, it's known, we have, there is some things going on in the emergency room that aren't the prettiest. And so, we as a board, as the licensing authority, have an obligation to this community, to our police and fire departments, to do everything we can to protect them for the calls that they go into in situations like this. And that's why I hope that you understand it. I would hope that the following day that you knew that this happened, you would have gotten everybody together and said, listen, I'm going to be going before the board again, you know, and this is going to be my second offense and you know what was said to you the first time, I'm not going to repeat it. You know what was said to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay? You would have said, hey, you know, you did this and I'm sorry I'm repeating myself, but you did this and you did this, definitely an improvement. But going forward, this is, this is an area or areas where we need to improve. And I hope that you would do that, understanding that, and I know it maybe doesn't have any jurisdiction on this, but when you watch the news every single day, these men and women put their lives on the line, on the line. And we have a responsibility to do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't happen to them. And that's your establishment. You know, you're responsible, you, and then it trickles to your employees, you know? And I, again, I commend you for picking up the phone and calling, but I have to say, Counselor, gray area, how did it get like that? And I just hope that if you leave in this room tonight with anything, is what are you going to do to continue to make improvements? Thank you.
Just, you know, I think that, you know how serious we were when you were here last? My colleague spoke about videotape. I understand how video works as far as writing over. It's always a headache for the police to get there and some within hours and it's gone. In a situation like this, you know, as much as videotape can hurt you, it can really help you.
Of course.
You know? God forbid that this individual, if he hurt someone, if he killed them, you're in a bad way as far as liability, liability, kind of tough bind. And without that videotape, you know, it's almost the door is closed on you. So, I'd much rather you save the tape and allow the police to have it. One, it identifies the individual clearly, but it also could very well protect you from a lot of things, to include saving your business.
Yes, sir.
Let alone whether we would take the license, whether you're going to lose it because they're going to take everything from you, and understandably so. So, I think that videotape would have been helpful. I agree with my colleagues, but the videotape's not here. And I'm not going to start to make assumptions. I think your bartender absolutely did exactly what the Board of Selectmen, the select board now, in my experience, over, well over 20 years, what they expected of license holders. I think he did the right thing in at least identifying what this individual looked like and identifying the vehicle without getting into a confrontation. So, I commend him for that. I just think they have to be more alert. You have to be more alert.
The pleasure of the floor, if I may ask?
Well, like I says, I'm not totally convinced, but in order for me to make a decision, like to revoke a license or to add a suspension, I got to be totally convinced that this person was over-served as the police report says. Again, I'm not an expert in, you know, people that are drunk and, you know, how drunk they are, a policeman usually has that ability or that experience that they have. But like you said, you have proof that you only served this individual three Heinekens, approximately eight to 12 ounces per beer. He did, was cognizant where he was actually be able to speak and verbalize to the bartender. Again, I asked my first question to you, did anybody observe him acting intoxicated or belligerent, slurring the words or whatever? And the answer was no. And like the attorney Solomon said, he did have the ability to run out on his own or walk out on his own and run out on his own without falling down at the time. Again, he went the wrong way, not knowing probably the town, like you did mention, you didn't know it was familiar with the individual. And like I said, if they were, he wouldn't have been in this trouble. Or you wouldn't have been, you guys, you wouldn't have been here either, you know what I mean? Because it's something you could, you were familiar with and could speak to the individual. But again, I really have no further evidence to actually say that we should take any further action.
Tom?
I agree.
What I would like to, and I agree as well, what I would like to see, as I'm only one member of this board, but what I would like to see under the direction of Attorney Solomon, because that is an expertise to you. And yes, is this incident far better than the first one we dealt with? Absolutely. And there are areas in this incident that definitely show improvement. I would ask that we can put in place some more training, maybe look at this incident, maybe see maybe things that we could have done a little bit different. Maybe there are, but if we could. I don't want everybody to walk out of this room tonight and say, oh, that's behind us, because it isn't behind us, not behind any of us. So, maybe we can look at this incident, maybe we can look at the video for yourself personally, for your employees and say, you know, maybe in 90 days, let's review and say, you know, this is what we've done since that evening, we've had, by the grace of God, no complaints and things are great, and we'll say, you know what, we're heading in the right direction. You know, because again, there is improvement on this incident far greater than the first one. So, I commend you for that. So, I agree, I think we should take that advice and let's work on our training, let's look at it, work with our employees and move forward.
No disagreement with that. I think that the plan for the prior establishment that I did that for, it was onsite training that I did and my recollection and it may be a little rusty, was that I had submitted something to the board and copied to Town Council indicating that this was the training that we did and it actually took place, so that you are aware that it actually took place. And I'm very happy to speak to my client about doing that and just submitting something to you administratively, indicating that all staff were present in the scope of the training that we did.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
Good job, Milford Police Department, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, like you said, I think it's definitely a quantum leap from the last incident that we had.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, buddy.
Again, not to be repetitive for the general public, we're now going to leave public hearings. We're going to go into scheduled appointments. Item three under scheduled appointments is our town engineer on the property on 36 Alder Street Dam.
Yeah, so, just want to be clear because I know it's 36 Alder Street in Medway, actually, is where the Beaver Dam is.
Okay.
And the dam has caused, I'm sure you guys are aware of the flooding that happened up on Maple Street on several occasions. And we have, well, we're in, we would like to apply with the Conservation Commission in Medway to remove the dam. And they're requiring us to indemnify them and saying that if we damage, the dam is right around, is right in front of a culvert under Alder Street. And so, if we were to damage the culvert during removal, that we would fix the culvert. Pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, in, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
In removing whatever they had that was done by the Beavers, what actually sort of fix what was ever happening on Maple Street?
Yes.
So, to me, it's worth the gamble, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's definitely, we will continue to have flooding if we do not. We've, we have trapped the Beaver over there already, so they shouldn't be making the Beaver Dam, they shouldn't be building back the Beaver Dam or making it higher, but even at its current height--
Yeah.
It, if we have large storms, it will flood Maple Street.
Right.
And even at the height it's at right now, it's still problematic for, even though you can pass on the pavement--
Mm-hmm.
The culverts are completely submerged and there's damage to Maple Street, the underside of Maple Street because of it. So, I definitely think it's important and we have hired, I've worked with the Highway Department throughout this process, we've hired an environmental consultant that will oversee the removal of the dam because you can, I'm less concerned with the culvert itself, I'm more concerned with downstream properties. If you remove too much of the dam too quickly, you can absolutely cause a great deal of damage downstream. So, we have somebody that'll be watching to make sure that it's done properly. And so, I'm really not that concerned about the possibility of damage, but it's a requirement of their permit, so.
And the Beavers are evicted already, right?
The Beavers have been evicted.
Good. Because they can build that dam quick.
They always come back.
I, we are ready for them now. If they come back, we'll evict them again.
I mean, my concern is the integrity of the roadway on Maple Street, that over time, we're going to end up spending a lot of money to take care of the damage once that roadway starts to come out--
Yeah.
As opposed to dealing with this upfront. I mean, I don't know, I've watched documentaries on Beavers and they're quite smart. They've tried everything from leaving the dams and putting piping so that the water flows under the dam, and they go down and block up the piping or remove it. They really, they're, that's, you know--
They are, these, both of the, there's actually two dams over, that we're aware of, over in Medway, and they both have the pipes in them under, under the water, which is, and it definitely makes a difference, but they still figure--
They go down and block them.
They still figure it out.
That's what they did, I think, to us up on Dillah Street. We had the dam there, right across from the water department. And that's why the cemetery and that piece of Dillah Street, along with what was coming--
Yeah, there's--
Wendy's, you know, because of improper--
Yeah, there's still, there's still some work for us to do down there, that's--
Yeah, but it was a Beaver Dam and it created a lot of headaches. So, I'm in favor of--
Yes.
This approach.
Mr. Chairman, if we just get a motion to authorize me to sign the indemnification letter to be sent to the Town of Medway Town Administration?
Have a motion, please.
Motion to have Rick sign the indemnification to the Town Administrator in Medway.
Second.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last item under scheduled appointments is Town Council, host community agreements with Sera Naturals and M1 Enterprises LLC.
You've got two on Zoom, you've got attorney--
Mr. Chairman?
How are you?
How are you?
Could identify yourself?
My name is Ryan Young. I am a part of this, this business. I started in the Massachusetts cannabis space back in 2014. I was a part of the first 17 grow operations to come online in the state. I've been doing this for a little bit. I know how to run a compliant grow operation and how to maintain proper relationships with the town. I've always operated a very clean grow operation, always been in good standings with the CCC that oversees the grow operations. I've worked all over the country with Air Wellness, who currently owns M1 right now in Milford, and then came to Milford, M1, to help them get that business where it needed to be, both M1 and M2, so I'm very familiar with the building. I saw all the good that Air Wellness did with the Town of Milford and vice versa, all the good that Milford did for Air Wellness for that space.
Could I interrupt maybe if someone just would let us know why you're here, what you're looking to do? I think that might be a better place--
Attorney, Attorney Nadya, would you like to come up, sit up front?
I don't represent them.
Oh, okay.
I represent Sera-- Which is, has our HCA.
What you're looking to do, why we're here, what you're going to be asking the board to do?
Yeah, I'm just here on behalf of my partners that are on the Zoom call right now. They are out of state right now currently, and I am here in person.
Excuse me, Ryan.
Yes, sir.
Are you with Sera or are you with M1?
I am with the group trying to move into M1.
Oh, okay.
I am no longer with Air Wellness.
Okay.
I was with Air Wellness for a while--
Yep.
And then stepped away, so I haven't been with them for over two years now.
Okay. So, you're going to be more or less, like, M1 will be a new, will be not a new company, but just a new name?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And I'll run the whole grow operation--
Okay.
Myself, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to help.
Sure.
Don't represent them and I really don't know a lot about the transaction they're involved in. I've never met any of the companies, actually. But I work for Sera, and Air Wellness is the investor in Sera, so it's not, they don't, they're not the licensed entity, Sera is the licensed entity. Sera has operated out of three buildings up there, built at different times. There's the original building, which is being referred to here as M1, that's 13 Commercial. That's a building you probably all have been in. It's, you go up the hill, take the right down, left down and you're at the bottom of the hill, and that's the original building. Subsequently, when the adult ballot question was favorably voted on in Massachusetts, Sera expanded into an M2, which is at one industrial. It's a grow facility right now, that's what it is. It's a cannabis grow facility. And then subsequently, they built the large, that's a 20,000 square foot capacity building. Then they built the larger bill, they refer to that as M2. Then they built the larger building at five to seven industrial, which they refer to as M3. So, M1, 13 Commercial, M2, one industrial, M3, five to seven, 10,000, 20,000, 70. Air is, I mean, Sera is consolidating its operations. They don't need three buildings any longer. And the way the Cannabis Control Commission works, every license is a separate license, every activity is a separate license, so there's cultivation license, there's a production license, there's a retail license, there's a transportation license. So, we are moving, the proposal is for the amendment to the HCA you have for us, is we are moving, seeking to move the medical cultivation and production license from 13 Commercial to one industrial. The adult production license and the transportation license from 13 Commercial to five to seven industrial. And that's what we're doing. As a consequence of that, these folks have come in and are interested in continuing to do adult cultivation at M1, which is a license we will be assigning to them, our current license, which requires changing control from the Cannabis Control Commission. So, one of the criteria to get to the Cannabis Control Commission is to have an HCA. So, we're amending our HCA to do the changes I mentioned. They need an HCA to be able to move forward with the 13 Commercial to go to the Cannabis Control Commission. That's a lot packed into a few minutes. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them, but that's why they're here, because we're consolidating and they're interested in using 13 Commercial. And if any of that's not consistent with the transaction you guys are involved in, please, you know, feel free to add into anything that you need to do. to do, hopefully that helps some.
No, I read over the host agreements and exactly how Attorney Fernandez just explained it, I guess it's called a successor in interest, right, John?
Correct, under the bylaw when we passed it, there was this interest in, in allowing Sierra to continue operating out of 13 Commercial and expanding into the adult, so there was a bylaw passed for adult purposes, the, the facility, the production and manufacturing cultivation of the adult product, that it was limited to those entities that were in business in, at that point in time, we added to that, obviously, since people don't stay in a business forever, and they would, should be able to transfer that business to a successor, we added that a successor in interest to Sierra could continue to operate that, and that would be the premise of this assignment, and that was cleared with Town Council, with Town Planner, and with the Building Commissioner, that this, this concept is exactly what the bylaw means.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Finnandys.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
And I as well don't have any questions.
I'm not set to.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
Concise, thank you for the explanation, too, thank you.
And motion?
A motion to accept. I'll second it.
Okay, so there's one motion for the first community agreement for Sierra Naturals, and the second one is.
Right, for M1.
Community agreement for M1 Enterprises LLC.
Right.
And so Paul, your first motion is going to be for?
First, the Sierra Naturals host agreement, and the second, now I also make a motion to accept for M1, for their community host agreement.
Second, then.
Okay, so on the first motion, I will make that unanimous?
Yes.
And on the second motion?
Unanimous, I second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good luck to you.
Nice to see you, Attorney Finnandys, as always.
That I've been hurting a long time, so thank you.
Take care, John.
Take care now.
Gentlemen, could we go back to one more thing, you corrected, in St. Mary's Parish, we did the application for the one day alcohol, don't remember doing the application for the one time entertainment license.
You know what, Rick, I didn't see that, that's why I kind of.
We've been right behind it.
What, what, what's that, Rick, the number?
It would have been. Yeah, see.
Okay.
I just need a motion.
Okay, that's why I kind of didn't bring that up, Rick, because I didn't see it on new business, and I didn't.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve one day entertainment license for the St. Mary's Church event, and what was the date, Rick?
It is May 11.
May 11th, 5:30.
May 11, 2024.
I second that, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous.
Okay, correspondence.
Yep. So, Town Administrator, old business, new business, invitation to speak, anybody online an invitation to speak, Chris?
We do have someone online, but I don't know maybe what they're here for, so.
Okay, no problem, and seeing nobody in the audience for invitation to speak, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is correspondence, we do have some correspondence on the Retirement Board, I believe, Mr. Mindy, is that something you're going to speak to?
Yeah, very simple, it is the recommendation from the Retirement Board, which I am a member, and it's a supplemental cost of living adjustment, the Retirement Board's going to meet at 1:00 PM on May 21, 2004, and the vote will be whether to authorize a cost of living adjustment effective July 1, 2024, to the town retirees or beneficiaries who were receiving a retirement allowance as of June 30, 2023, the statute allows for the Retirement Board to grant a cost of living adjustment up to 3.2%, so this is just notification to the Board, that the Retirement Board will be meeting, that's one of the requirements.
Good.
Okay.
That's all that.
Does not require a motion or a vote.
No.
Okay, so this is more just general information for us and for the general public?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, and with that, we do have an executive session tonight, which is the current, the contract for the new treasurer collector position, we'll be going into executive session, we will be adjourning the regular session meeting, we will not be returning to open session, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous, going into executive session requires a roll call, could I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well, and with that, we will adjourn our regular, may I have a motion to adjourn our regular?
We'll head to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous, to adjourn our regular session meeting, May 6, 2024, at Milford Town Hall, good night, everybody, thank you for your patience, as we jumped around the agenda a little bit tonight, there was a lot going on, sorry for the confusion, but thank you for staying with us and staying informed, have a good night and, and a nice week, thank you very, very much.